Well, Eddie has been working for the contractors as well as the mayor. And they're ready to start the project. What we need to do is appropriate the amount for the full cost of the project. Then when it's done, ODNR will um um uh provide us with their their match. So we pay upfront and then they reimburse us.
Is the grant a seventy-five twenty-five or eighty-twenty like something like that?
I believe it's a seventy-five percent.
Is it right?
So this is the legislative request. And also it's been asked that that be passed on the first reading. Because the contractor um has to coordinate with the equipment supplier. And the equipment supplier thinks he can have the equipment here within three to four weeks.
Good.
So the contractor has to get that into his schedule. So the sooner we get this done, the sooner he can order the equipment.
Yeah. Um, first of all, I think I think I think we gotta say uh thank you to Eddie Hunt. Um, he was the, I mean, John's giving this to you tonight. I think this might be the first thing John did in this whole thing. Because Eddie really ran with the ball um on this. Coordinated with uh Bob Geller. And uh I I thought did a really good job putting together our grant application. Um, we had applied for, is it last year is when we'd sent it in?
I think it was over a year and we didn't get it and then we got.
We didn't get it the first round and then and then ODNR held our our application. And when the when it was when that funded, when that grant program was funded again, um, they went ahead and and accepted our uh grant application. Um, the uh so, big thanks to Eddie and and helping to make this happen. The equipment that we're replacing, if you can picture this now, you know, we've got Geller Park, you got the entrance, you got the parking lot. Then you got shelter houses. Beyond those shelter houses are older wood-based, like jungle gym type like things. And then also, I think the old the old swing sets come around too, right? Okay. So these are things, I don't know how many years ago. These are, these are playground equipment items that were identified by, we had our insurance company just basically one year come through and and a a look see. And recommendations of the things that we should maybe look to address. And for various reasons, this playground equipment was something that they had mentioned in their feedback. Um, so there is a need for us to replace that equipment. Um, also, gosh, I'm trying to think. This has been maybe a couple of years ago now, a couple of school years ago now. Uh, gotta thank the kids who were at Garfield Elementary at that time. Um, because one of the things that was uh helpful in the grant request was public feedback as to what we were looking to put in. So we went to the kids at Garfield Elementary at the time and gave them two options of things to vote on if we could have a contractor install our equipment for free. And two things to vote on if we had to pay for the contractor to put it in. And the kids voted on what they wanted to see uh put in. And what they wanted to see put in is what we're gonna put in as part of this. So I think we gotta thank them for their feedback. And also, we gotta give a big thank you to Christian Robertson and Robertson Construction. Um, Eddie and I met with him two or three weeks ago out at Geller Park um to kinda explain what we were looking to do, why we were looking to do it. Um, he has agreed to uh volunteer um his time and his company's time toward the installation of this. Um, I would like to.
It's gonna be installed by tomorrow?
No. Um, I would like to, and 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 Eddie's and is gonna kinda coordinate with uh Christian on on this. I think this is a really good opportunity. Every once in a while, I hear from different community groups or church groups or whatever, you know, hey, is there something that we can, you know, kinda get involved in with the city? This, I think, would be an excellent opportunity for that, you know? We'll have Robertson Construction kind of put the 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 bases in, you know, with the footers and everything. But there's a lot of uh pieces to all of this that can be installed. And I think it will be a good opportunity as a as a community project for any number of groups. And so, we're gonna work with Christian to try to encourage uh the community to come out and help us uh when it's time to, you know, to put the pieces uh together for for all of this. So, um, a big thank you to him and to Robertson Construction, the folks there for uh donating uh their expertise and their time to uh help get this equipment installed so that we could install the 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 best and the most uh uh equipment for, you know, the money that we're uh looking to put into it. I think all told, I think we're expecting the project to be at what, about maybe thirty-two to thirty-five thousand? And Eddie wants to have some overage, so this is for forty. But that's kinda what we're expecting, you know, the the costs to to come in at. So that's all I got to say on that.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go to item number two. About a year ago, if you remember, ODOT identified a section of State Route thirteen just south of where the radio station is, uh where the shoulder had to be repaired because the uh the guardrail was actually falling off to the side. Um, they have uh bid that project out and they anticipate construction beginning around the end of July. Unfortunately, this project will require the State Route thirteen be closed, both lanes in both directions. I don't know the length of the closure yet. They anticipate the closure around August fifth. So that means there will be detours and ODOT hasn't advised us where the detour routes are going yet. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. That'll be a major closure when State Route thirteen is closed.
Sorry, end of July, you say?
Yes, they'll begin around the end of July.
Yeah, where will it be closed from?
Uh, they anticipate August fifth as the closure date for State Route thirteen, that section.
Will it be? Tim, can you, can you flip the, 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 yeah, can you move us ahead to July?
Oh, I understand.
And then, yeah. Okay, so they're expecting to close it on August fifth. Will it be open by August nineteenth? Cause I think the first day of school maybe is the twentieth?
I don't know. Um, but I do know this, that if they're closing at both lanes, it's to get it done as fast as possible.
Okay.
But I can't say it's gonna be done by that day.
Okay.
They don't have a lot of information themselves yet because they haven't had the reconstruction meeting with the contractor.
Oh, if you're Dylan, correct.
I don't know.
So, this is a, this is an ODOT job all the way, so. What uh, what coordination do they need from us?
Not a lot. They administer the entire project. So they will put up all the roadblocks, they will put up all the detour signs and all of that type of stuff. So they don't really need much assistance from us at all.
Okay.
Other than our patience with project.
Okay.
So we're looking at the detour being on Irvingwick or?
Well, it can only be one of two places. It would be um Hopewell and Irvingwick um to State Route seventy-nine or it would be Linville Road to Dorsey Mill Road. So, we're both. I'm guessing it'll probably be more Irvingwick Drive to seventy-nine to Hopewell because of the traffic. But I'm not sure.
Motor is the middle of that.
When's motor, I was gonna say, when's, when's the motor weekend?
Yep, ninth, tenth.
Cause a lot of people like to avoid something by going over and around that way and they're gonna not, you know, not feel.
I know. Looking view will get a lot more traffic.
Fifth is when they're gonna close it.
Is he gonna be okay if I set up my canopy and the median?
Set up your what?
Just to see the show?
My canopy?
Just bring a nice chair.
My keg of beer.
Sure.
To watch the show?
Do some weeding as a volunteer.
Oh, the wine is it? I'm always.
So we'll all eagerly anticipate that project, but it does have to be done because it is a very real.
Homp is to go by John Groff's house.
Yeah.
What, what, what is that project again, John?
It's the uh, the shoulder repair on State Route thirteen, just south of the radio station.
Yeah, like the guardrail.
We're friends here. You go past him going south and you can see the guardrail's actually tilted. Okay, item.
Who is it? Is it that Doug Heffley that ended up, we can't get any help with that?
All right, that's, that's terrible. Um, item number three, uh, we have been actively sending out grass violations since April regarding grass cutting. And fortunately, we haven't had to cut that many, but we've had to cut some. And right now, I have a grass cutting report for roughly uh four hundred dollars uh for three lots that were cut. And we will have a couple more coming in. I'm just reporting on this to council tonight. Lynn Hunt will also read this to you under um communications tonight. And ask that you take action on it to forward it down to the county auditor.
John, did you, did you have one on Colonial?
No.
Okay, someone else was to do that, huh?
Yeah. You know what happens sometimes is the neighbors get tired of seeing the high grass, so they cut it. So we never know it has to be cut, which is fine with us. So, but.
It's fine with the person that doesn't cut it themselves.
Yeah, that's right.
Hey, did we have to pay to do that?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Matter of fact, that's one of the mine here, IBC Sales Corporation.
IBC?
Yeah. IBC Sales Corporation is the hostess or the ex-hostess company. We had to cut that.
Dude, that'd bring in some sheep.
Bail it.
They could pass off with Twinkies.
But you know, Twinkies, by the way, are coming out in about two weeks.
Yeah, that's what I said.
So anyway.
Who worked, bought the rights to the, to that? Who, who owns that?
A lawn company.
Sure, is that right? Cause they, they had them in Canada about a month ago or so, Twinkies on the shelves on some.
Oh, was that right?
Yeah. And I can't remember, didn't know I was gonna buy a box, cause it's like, you know, cause of the French and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And we did, uh, we got sidetracked and did buy one and stuff.
Cuban cigars or?
Yeah.
Canadian Twinkies, huh? Yeah. Cuban cigars or Canadian Twinkies? Can I bring one across the water?
Uh, item number four, uh, the median landscaping bid that we've been working on for quite a while. Um, we do have, uh, we did get a, an estimate from a contractor, um.
Showcase.
Showcase, um, uh, to do it for the remainder of the summer. And we're limiting what they do because the median contractor that actually put the stuff in um has to come back and do some stuff. Um, so what I've got here is a legislative request um asking that thirty-seven hundred dollars be appropriated from the general fund. Authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Showcase Lawn and Garden to maintain the median through uh the end of October of this year. Then what we will do next year is we're gonna have to reevaluate what we wanna do with the median, how we wanna maintain it. Do we wanna make any changes in it and stuff like that? But this will get us through the end of the year.
Those trees that they're replacing then later, will those be under warranty for a year?
Yes, any new tree they replace this year will have a full year's warranty from the date that it was installed.
Okay. Do they have any idea at all as to why those trees didn't make it and the other trees like farther south? Like in front of, you know, Panera and Dairy Queen, all those, or why, why they made it?
They have not expressed an opinion to me. But I have a feeling this is not an unusual situation. The reason I say that, this may shock you or shock me. ODOT pays the landscape contractor a twenty percent bonus for every tree that survives the one-year warranty period. I couldn't believe it, but that's exactly what ODOT.
You'd have thought it'd been the reverse.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, 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 so because of that bonus situation, it suggests that it's not uncommon for the landscape to die occasionally. That's all I can tell you. I don't know much more than that. That's just my.
It's an incentive to do it right.
Yep.
First time.
Yeah.
Boy, that's a shame.
So you don't have to.
Kind of an incentive to do it right.
Yes.
Just one bid was submitted.
We, yeah, that's it. So we're just gonna award them, you know, just to a regular.
How many bids you got on this so far?
What is that?
This is the part I'm gonna back.
I think you waived the bidding procedure on that, or did you? I can't remember.
Yeah, it's waived, but how many different, how many vendors have you got?
There was just the one.
There's a catalog that had, um, and it had, there was a catalog that came with the uh, had something to do with the grant program. Cause it had, it had the state construct price and it had a U construct price, right?
Right, and you, you had to select certain materials from the catalog, I think. I think it was.
This is a state bid, you can just look up the grant, they pretty much are telling you what you gotta block and move.
Yeah, yeah, um, it was, it was a, a U build, there was a U build price for each thing and there was a state build price for each thing. And that's where Robertson Construction coming in and doing it allowed us to use the.
Wave, wave.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just asking.
Any other questions on the median landscaping? If not, something else.
But Tim, did you have a question?
Does this say waive the bidding procedure?
Okay, I was, I was wondering when they were doing that median and everything, they never dug down very deep through the old, the old asphalt and the bed, you know, the road base and everything.
Uh-huh.
And I was always curious if, cause I didn't actually see when they put the trees in, actually if they, how deep they actually, you know, how much depth they have for.
Did they get dirt? I mean, did they get the old dog?
They didn't actually dig that out.
They dug out, they dug out till they hit dirt and then they put first top somewhere.
They did, they did actually dig, dig, I mean.
I can't tell you the depth.
Because, you know, when they, they cut that out for the, the curb to go in and stuff, there was still asphalt and stuff down, you know, in areas and stuff underneath there.
I, I remember that they went deeper.
They did, they needed for the.
Didn't they have people like drive into it?
Yeah, yeah, we did. And I would say it probably, they went down a good two and a half to three feet in, in most cases of it. All the asphalt was removed, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah, they cut out all the asphalt. You would have, you'd have drainage problems and moisture problems and everything out there. Any other questions?
Okay, I just, I just, when I drive by, it was like, there, you know, it wasn't gone and then next thing you know, there's some, you know, so. I was a little leery that.
It's great you're paying the.
I know all of the asphalt that's.
I know how committed you've been to that project for so many years. I don't know what surprise if you paid that much attention to it.
I drive by it every day.
He was, he was looking for the spot where his statue was.
Yeah, I'm a good foundation for my statue.
Uh, where you put the explosives?
Cause I want one of them trees to go really big and get a big truck and then it will die and we'll cut it off and we'll carve my statue into it.
Oh, I like it though.
And then if I die, I get reincarnated. I miss a pigeon. Oh, anyway, let's get away from that. Um, the banner program that we have on State Route seventy-nine has worked out brilliantly. I just thought, it's the mayor's idea. Um, uh, Jenna sent out letters probably a month ago to um a large number of businesses not on the median section of the project. We've had a tremendous response from people wanting to purchase banners. And we put their logo on it and stuff for three months. And we've been working with Dr. Science to do this. And we now have uh two seasons left in the year, fall and winter. We are full, the fall banner schedule is completely full. The winter banner schedule is full with the exception of just two banners. And it's been a fantastic response and I wanna compliment the mayor on that. It was his idea and, uh, you know, we're not paying a thing for it. So, that was a, a great idea.
Well, I think, I think Dr. Science, uh, I think they came up with a real, with a really workable solution.
Yeah.
Uh, for us on, on that, so appreciate you guys putting your heads together on that and and thinking of that.
I'm excited for the next round myself.
Yeah, I know, it's just all of a sudden, they just started cascading in. And you've done such a great job.
Thank you.
On those first ones.
I think it helped, you know, getting, what was it, Park Got Some and?
Uh, Frish's.
Frish's, I, I, I think it maybe helped being able to visualize what this is gonna look like. Yes, um. We gave, we gave first crack to the businesses along that stretch of the road. And then we opened it up to all the Heath uh businesses that we could get a hold of.
Any questions on that? Um, item number six, um, a couple of meetings ago, you passed new zoning legislation that we put into effect. There was one area of the codified ordinances that I should have included it in and I didn't. So what I'd like to do is um have a legislative request here authorizing that it be placed in what we call the general design standards and development regulations sections of the codified ordinances. The reason I'd like it there is this is where most engineers and architects go to get what they need to design projects. So they have the fees right there in front of them will be very helpful. So I have a legislative request asking that the fees also be placed in that section.
So we got them in the other one?
We have them in the other one.
Is there anything in this one? There's nothing in this one that supersedes what's in the other area?
No, no, this is exactly what was approved.
Okay.
We just wanna place it again in the premises.
All right.
And that's actually a better section to place it.
What was the section that you put in?
It was um eleven oh seven.
What is it?
Eleven oh seven.
Eleven oh seven.
Do you need that waived or anything, John, once it comes around?
No. Um, that does, that reminds me, the uh, the median, the landscape median, I, I'd like to go back to that for a second. That should be on the agenda for a minute.
It is.
Could you waive the first, the second reading on that and pass it? That's why we put it down there. I apologize.
Is that in the request itself? Of the thirty-seven hundred?
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah. It may not be. I mean, I, I just wrote that.
Yeah, it is not.
Okay. But I am asking, and I think it is on the agenda. Yeah, and I would ask that you pass that on first reading.
If we could go back to that just real quick.
Comments, pass on first reading. I was looking up here.
You said that was till October or the end of October or when?
Till the end of October.
Till the end of October, okay. What does that, I mean, if we pass them the first, I mean, it would, it would pass tonight and become effective and stuff. But so that gets July, August, September, October, four months. Is that getting us any planning or just weeding or just what does that get us?
There's no planting involved.
So what does it get us for that much?
There'll be trimming, uh, weed, removing weeds, um, uh, putting down uh weed killer or whatever, stuff, things like that. But no plant.
Is there any watering in that?
Yes, yes, if watering is needed, they water specially and and.
We have a need as that.
Do they, do they check, I mean, it, is this like, like on a weekly bas- basis or something like that? Biweekly? All right, I just, I'm just trying to, since Bob had been doing it with some of his guys and just, you know, weeding and stuff, I just didn't know what we were getting in additional for the money, you know?
Well, in this last, this uh, uh, Wednesday last week, in the project, in, in the construction project, it was written in that it would be weeded by the landscape company. And uh, and, and they did not do the two weedings that were contracted for last year because it wasn't in last year, the, the planting's weren't in. So, ODOT got a hold of Shelly and Sands, who got a hold of the landscaper that was contracted with. And the landscaper has agreed to come in and do those two as they were contracted for. And the first one was Wednesday. We wanted to try to have it cleaned up, you know, prior to tomorrow's Stark Spinal celebration. So the first one of that was this past Wednesday.
Let me just say this to the uh, the um, the uh, the person we're gonna hire to do this itemized everything. So they don't need to be, if, if the original landscape contractor hired by ODOT comes in, then our contractor doesn't have to do it for a period, so we don't pay them for it.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So that, that's the way it's itemized.
Okay.
Yeah.
For a biweekly?
They'll bill us basically biweekly.
If they're there, if they need.
If they didn't, if they don't need to do something, they don't bill us for it.
Okay. So this is worst case scenario kind of figure. It's this much or less than that.
Right, thirty-seven hundred is more than what we anticipated costing us.
Okay.
It could cost us half that much.
Okay.
And by the end of October, weeds aren't really crawling in the lumber.
It's your last cleanup before the snow flies, you know, yeah. And any trimming or any, you know, last maintenance before.
Yeah. Okay. And when are they planning on putting those, replacing those trees again?
Okay, they're probably October again. Because they don't want to replace them in the summer. So we have to wait till October to do it. And then wait until next spring to see if they survive.
That's prime time for plants.
Any other questions on that? Just one last thing. Um, I have not talked much about development recently. That's not to say we're not talking to developers. Um, there's a lot of stuff that developers have that, uh, they have pending contracts and things like that that prevents us, the mayor, myself, uh, and, and really giving out much information about what's being discussed. So just because you don't hear from me on a regular basis about something coming into the city doesn't mean we don't have discussions going on with a variety of different developers. That's not the case, and I just wanted to give you a little confidence in that. We do, and there are some really interesting things that may develop in the city, but they take time to get through these sequences. And, um, so we have to be careful what we say. But I just wanna let you know that there could be some nice things coming in the future. And if you've gone by the old Carter Lumber Company, you'll see they're dismantling part of the building in preparation for coconus coming in there. That took a year and a half.
Taken their good old.
Yeah, and so I'm guessing it'll be maybe the end of the year, the way they're going.
Any other, can you elaborate on the type of, is retail, commercial, industrial?
I can't really get too much into it right now, but it's, it's interesting stuff.
It's just a big tease.
That's right.
I see where Paco's Tacos, the old Taco Bell was another taco place or something.
I saw a sign there, yeah, today when I drove by.
Yeah, another taco place, or Mexican food places going in there. Um, I don't know too much about it.
Yeah, obviously, you, cause you didn't share with us. I got, my wife yelled at me. She says, you didn't tell me about that. I, she says, what? She says, that. Pointed the sign, I says, I didn't know about it.
I, um.
Who's he think you are?
You should know everything.
Well-informed or something?
That could be.
But I, I think the case is that, as though we're prohibited really from talking a lot about it. There are things going on that are very interesting.
And in what location?
Can't tell you any location.
Oh, you can, well.
In the city of Heath.
Oh, okay.
He's just a big, he just throws the bait out in the water.
He's just chomping the water. And you're getting a lot of bites.
Ruby Tuesday's gonna be.
It's like my.
Somebody's gonna jump all over.
Well, that's why, I, I know the rumor about that.
The Ruby Tuesday's.
The front half is already taken and, cause somebody was looking at the back half for a barbecue place, but it didn't work out because they wanted them to spend too much.
You may not get too far.
Come on, come on, John, come on. Come on, come on, I know you can, you give a little. I'm not sure if you mentioned this or not, but it has been before planning commissions, so we can say this. Um, where the um Heath Motorsports used to be on the corner, let you know that, that kinda corner and you got the service road that runs back there. On the corner, Central Parkway and that service road, we had um planning commission, was it, was it their, was their site plan, I think, that we reviewed? Uh, it wasn't anything interior, it wasn't any.
No, neighbor, right.
Yeah, yeah, for uh raising canes, the uh, what is it, the, like the, the chicken. Yeah, yeah, they're looking uh to locate on that corner where the service road comes back and would go like toward tumbleweed or whatever. Looking to locate uh right there.
The uh, Wayne Farnsworth, who owns that whole strip of property, um, is looking at development. And, and that's one of the areas we're discussing. And, and that's one of the areas we're discussing, are other options that may be coming up too. So now the, the Raising Cane's is not confidential, uh, but it's just something we don't wanna go public with, we'll let them do it. But it does sound good.
Yeah.
A lot of.
I mean, they were, they were, they were at a planning and commission meeting, which is a public meeting, but, uh, you know, we're letting them kinda run with however they wanna. Bail it.
And I have no other remarks other than I hope to see some of you tomorrow night. I'm, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have the event. The weather's not that bad. And a lot of people, uh, including a lot of people in this room, have put a lot of time and effort into the event, so I hope you all come and enjoy it.
What's tomorrow?
You being the most.
I, yeah, yeah. Tomorrow night, I'm gonna join Keith on the media with some beer.
Okay.
Well deserved.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, you are, you put in.
So anyway, I could go.
You're on tomorrow, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I'll be there, what, about three, four?
Becky and Devon.
Was Brett gonna be helping Jeff?
Okay. Brett, I don't know if Brett Dorn was, does Jeff know?
No, but let's, we'll, we'll tell him afterward.
Yeah, I don't know. Was Brett Dorn going to help you on that?
Okay.
Shalor.
Oh, Shalor, okay.
Or Mark was, okay.
So anyway, that's where I'm going now. So I apologize for not being at the meeting tonight. I'm really gonna miss you. But anyway, sacrifices have to be made.
We can feel the emotion.
Yeah. Clear on me, yeah. Well, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Six oh two?
Are we done?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Don't see Brian coming through.
I got one.
I might have, cause I can't see the bear.
Big one down.
I think my periscope wouldn't.
I usually hear from movies.
Everybody got one?
Yeah.
Everybody got what they want? Okay, six oh three finances in order. Quick rerun of everything we just pretty much went over last thirty minutes. First item, thirty-seven hundred dollars, general fund authorized mayor into a contract with Showcase, Showcase Lawn and Landscape to perform State Route seventy-nine median landscape maintenance, not to exceed thirty-seven hundred dollars. Questions, comments? Further?
The only question I have is really not about doing it, but, um, my daughter's fiance's father owns that company and I didn't. She doesn't benefit in any way and I don't benefit in any way, but I didn't know why she refused to myself from voting.
Your daughter's fiance's dad.
Owns that company.
Wow, I don't know what the Ohio Athletics Commission say about that, but those are, uh, those are six degrees of removal, I'm saying.
That's what I thought. He's not affiliated with the company, so, okay.
You know, have you?
I know it, I know him, yeah.
Have you?
I've been to his house for dinner.
Oh, well, that shuts it down right now.
Ah, jeez. Gone hot.
I'm not even sure you can attend the meeting.
I don't like it.
Dinner, we're breaking bread.
Have, have you discussed this at all, really?
No, no, we don't discuss any business.
Okay.
No. It was Cody's birthday, so I went to his house for dinner.
That's the fiance?
Yeah.
So you're saying you're voting against it?
Well, I think it's a little, a little clear to.
So you're saying you wanna vote against it, so you don't wanna have to do that, so you wanna recruit yourself, so you don't have to, have to be against it?
Cause you have to go over there for dinner some other time.
No, but it's only been two, so it's not, yeah, but I just wanted to throw that out there, so, uh, doing anything that might seem.
It's really close, no?
I know, well, you know.
It's razor thin. I think you're gonna get okay, I think we're gonna be okay.
Alright. Alright.
Any other major challenges or issues? Okay, second item. Update zoning design development fees, chapter eleven oh seven. As Mr. Groff indicated, anything else for that, committee? Third item, appropriate forty thousand dollars not to exceed within capital permits for playground equipment according to stick rent and stick kind of bid type of thing. Okay, everybody?
Yeah.
Other items, Keith?
Um, just informational, there's two items right now listed on eBay. There's some battery packs that came from the fire department for the life pack twelve defrigulators. And they're not. I've just posted one, just to see what the market would bear, so I don't sell two hundred and seventy-five dollar each batteries for two dollars. But I think two dollars and fifty cents is where one bid is right now. When's the bid close? Think tomorrow. But there may be a s- a, uh, smattering of bidding that will come along right at the end. That's not un, not uncommon.
Yeah.
But I'm glad I didn't list them all at once.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, I did get a contact, somebody that said they were willing to take them all at forty bucks a bar. That doesn't cover the nine hundred dollars that you and I talked about. So, um, I'll do my best. Uh, the other thing that's listed, uh, some time ago in the wastewater department, they replaced some variable drive something.
Variable drive.
Yeah. Uh, I don't, I'm not sure they're motors, but they are variable drive units, like there's, like a great big computer, um, board. Anyway, I went over, took pictures of them, posted them. They are thousands of dollars each when they're new. Uh, two of the three were taken out of service while they were still functioning as, as, uh, they were supposed to. And I posted all three in one auction and started the bidding at five hundred dollars and I haven't gotten a sniff yet. So I don't know what'll transpire with that, but, but we'll see what happens. Kind of testing the market a little bit on that. Uh, if they, they don't bring, uh, five hundred dollars, then nobody's really interested in them. I don't think they'll bring forty. I would think anybody that's interested in them at forty bucks would be tickled pink to pay five hundred. So anyway, I, I didn't want them to just scrap, but. And I was out of the office today, just, uh, getting informational. I, I had a medical appointment in Columbus, but I timed that medical appointment so that I could, uh, attend Sergeant Bob White's swearing in at Hilliard. And Bob White, you'll recall, used to be a patrolman here in Heath. And, uh, he's been a friend of mine for some time. He came from the sheriff's office to Heath, went to the railroad police and ended up in Hilliard. The guy tests really well, but he, so he has had the ability to move around and try different directions. But he, uh, was sworn in as a, as a sergeant. Nice ceremony, every, every bit of seventy-five people there.
Wow.
And of course, Don Schoenhardt was there and I got to say hi to Don. And, uh, that's all I have. With the exception, I've got, I'd like to, to, uh, have a short executive session to discuss personnel.
Anything on the CAFR or anything?
Oh. I'm sorry, I, I missed that. The, the CAFR is done and it's, it's online. If you go to the auditor's, uh, link on the website and click on that and you're having trouble sleeping at night, read that and you'll do.
You'll follow me, huh?
Yeah, now the audit's not posted online, but you guys should have or will soon receive audit letters from, uh, Wilson Shannon and stuff. And that's all I have.
Thanks. You wanna go into executive session?
Yeah, or anyone have anything else for finance first?
If there's anything else for finance, then I'll, I'll make a motion. No? Motion to go into executive session.